I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning, everyone. Next, I will go to the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of last week's minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve last week's minutes.
And I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Approval of claims and payments.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the claims for payment for this week.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have is a consideration of contract with Premier for printing program. Mica, you got everything we need on that?
Yes, um, an agreement I emailed to you guys on Monday. This is a printing program for all the departments and the counties except for emergency management. It covers, um, there's a list of equipment. We've talked to each department to see what, um, make sure that the equipment that we're wanting to either keep or replace. Every printer, copier, scanner will be, um, not scanner, sorry. Every printer, copier, fax machine will be under a maintenance agreement, um, which covers supplies, toners, et cetera. I've worked with Jessica in the Otter's Office, um, in terms of the financial side of things. And IT Department would ask that you guys accept this, uh, contract.
Some of the cost savings.
Um, some of the cost savings are, will be treated like one large company, for example. So, we had a lot of machines that were not under any kind of maintenance at all. So, we were, um, needing to repair them and pay for each time we had service. Now that is covered, so there's cost savings. We had some substantial costs last year in the Sheriff's Office, um, before they got their new equipment. So, uh, that will cover future service costs. And then, um, we're benefiting from a scale. Instead of each department getting a, a maintenance agreement at a certain price, we're benefiting from combining them all and, and being treated like a large company. We get a much better deal for our maintenance.
Now, there's a buyout on some of these maintenance programs as well.
There are two buyouts, I think. Is that it?
Yeah.
This is two. This is Travis with Premier.
Hello, everyone. Uh, there are two. Access has a system out at the conservation, uh, which we will take care of. That'll be taken care of and implemented with the new program. So, there will be no cost to you, uh, to leave that program. As well as, um, there was, um, two Heck and Jimenez machines in the EMAG, which is no longer in play. So, it could just be the, the recorder upstairs. We will be looking at how many months are remaining on that annual term and reimbursing them for that. But every other device would be upgraded through Premier, uh, that are already on contracts with us. So, all of those will be basically taken care of with us.
It's kind of a combination. We're keeping some, um, existing machines that are like a year old.
Just one.
Mike?
No. Well, well, the purchased ones?
Yeah.
They'll all be in place, yep. But then just one lease at the conservation, um, in actually.
So, even the, the leased device at the engineer's office is going to be upgraded to a newer device?
Correct.
And even with the buyouts, this is a less of an expense to the county annually?
That is correct, yeah, by a large amount, yes.
So, part of what we've done and why it's taken so long, we started this last March, was, um, trying to get a good cost from where we were spending on lease payments, um, some purchases outright, and then maintenance and service, toner supplies, et cetera, et cetera. Trying to get an average cost, what we were paying as a county, we had never done this before. So, we knew that, um, something like this wouldn't, you know, couldn't figure out if it was a cost savings. So, we figured all that out ahead of time.
Do you have an id- an idea of what dollar amount the cost savings will be?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
I would say, I can look at my pile of notes.
This included the sheriff. But you're looking at almost, I mean, the sheriff was included. You were saving over a thousand. Now, it's probably anywhere from five to six hundred dollars a month in just printing and copying. Due to the fact that you guys have lease payments as well as maintenance contracts, us being able to combine those to one contract and a pool of images. So, I'll just give an example. Each department is itemized out currently for the treasurer, the copy room, the auditor, the recorder. Uh, they have a, basically their own maintenance contract associated with each device. So, the treasurer has a, a maintenance contract and it's fifty dollars a month. And the recorder has one that's five hundred dollars a year. And then, it, the auditor has one. We're able to combine all those images. So, if you look at all the departments countywide, you guys are running about thirty-four thousand images per month on every single device. Being able to combine those into one maintenance program, we call it a pool. Um, you get a, a very low rate on a cost per copy. So, that's where you guys are saving a lot of your money. As well as when you're acquiring these devices, one by one, now you're acquiring fifteen versus one at a time for each department. So, you're getting an item of scale, which is really saving a ton there as well. Which will now keep you guys on the same path. So, every five years, you guys get to do this again, where you're saying, hey, you know, that was a great program. We loved it. Let's, let's start over. And you get all new refreshed technology. You get to stay up to date. If you're having issues, kind of like the copier room upstairs, we, it's the treasurer location, but it's five years old. You know, it's having some issues. So, the easiest way would be to replace it, which is kind of why we're at this point right now, because that machine is one year, one, one month, um, from its renewal, so.
Besides the financial savings, are one of our, or a couple of our other goals, was to get all the departments using equipment that's under service and, and newer, because we had some pretty old equipment, or we had some departments that, um, didn't have budgets for purchasing equipment. And so, we're trying to level the playing field across all the departments, get everyone using the same interface. That was the other, um, goal, is that, um, we had, how many, like ten or twelve different devices?
Yep.
Across all the departments. And from an IT perspective, we wanted to get everyone, um, using the same interface so that tech support and, um, other kinds of support, even just helping people know how to use their machines is much easier. Like we're all, you know, somebody could be in one department and go over to another department and they'll know how to use that machine.
I'll add to that. Um, it will increase Matt and Mica's efficiency on, on troubleshooting some things. All of these new products will be Connect Key, which allows them to do everything from their computer. So, all they need is an IP address for that location. They can actually come, connect to that copier from their computer in their office and make any changes that they need from their, from their screen. So, instead of having to go to the auditor, go to the treasurer, go where, they can just do it all from their computer. They can see what they see and they can make any changes they need to make. But that's a good point.
And the other point we wanted is, um, with us being a smaller department than we've been in the past, we wanted to enable our users to, um, have a company that they could call for support when there's a problem, that they don't always have to just call the IT department, but they can call the printing company to have someone come out. I mean, that's part of what we're doing with this kind of contract is, we want, um, every, every machine that we're using to be just one phone call away from getting someone here to look at it, whether it's a big problem or a small problem, and not have to worry about, um, what it's going to cost to replace or fix or repair, how much time it's going to take or how much downtime there'll be.
And how easy it is to call us. Each device will have a sticker on it. It's our toll-free 1-800 number and a five-digit code. All you give the call taker on the phone is that five-digit code. They know what location you have, what machine you have. And then, they can also support, you know, with, with maintenance and things like that, just by that five-digit number. So, it's about a twenty-second phone call and our service tech is here to help support.
Did we get all our printing issues, all troubleshooting?
Yeah, so the last couple of months, what we were also doing is, um, mostly it was with the, the solution software. Their printing interface is a little different. And, um, so we've been working with the three major departments that do big, big printing jobs from, um, that software on, um, ways that we can make sure that things print and look the way they should, especially for like, um, things that are sent out to the public, the tax statements, assessor statements, and that sort of thing. And we did get those resolved.
Any other questions? Thanks, folks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions from any of the other offices?
I guess that my only comment was, when you talk about level playing field, that was kind of my stickler for, but it's gonna happen for this first year. You know, it, it's not a level playing field when we took bids, because you have most of the contracts and nobody else can afford to buy those out. And I guess, and part of my reluctance was it comes down to, you know, more or less taking some business away from our local, um, local business. And it comes for, for the supervisors, it comes down to, um, the cost savings versus doing business locally. And I know we used to have a policy that we do business locally first, if possible. But, so I guess, um, you know, that was, that was my main stickler with this whole, whole situation. So, in five years, it'll be more of a level playing field when it does come up for, for get, for bids.
I figure what will happen in four years, the county will have to decide what, how we feel. The program is gone, and then, and if we're gonna continue doing a pooled, or if we're gonna all go our separate ways. And then, uh, we'll, we'll put out on RP, you know, declaring what, uh, equipment that we're wanting to use and our stipulations. And then, we'll, we'll put that out to, um, several different companies, probably Premier, Access, um, Orico Dealer, Heck and Jimenez, or whoever is in business, and, you know, five years, we'll, we'll throw it out there and, and kind of do it all over again. And, um, but easier.
And we did make an adjustment. We did make an adjustment, so that, the, the term will end at your fiscal year. So, you won't have to do this two to three months prior. That was a hiccup as well.
One of the things Jessica and I really wanted is, we do have, um, our main copier printer upstairs. The lease ends in March. And we really wanted to stop having leases end in the middle of fiscal years, because it's really difficult for budgeting purposes. So, we did ask and, and did get a sixty-three monthly, so it'll be ending in the June of, what is it?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay.
So, we had a good time for you guys to make an adjustment moving forward. That'll get everybody online as well.
Would you anticipate the next, the year six, when you come back in, it'd be less than today's without the buyouts?
You can go ahead and answer if you'd like.
That's a very hard thing for us to project right now.
Anticipate.
Because we, as everybody sitting in the room knows, nobody can project out what prices will look like in five years. But...
And we're not sure what our needs will be in five years. You know, one of the things these machines do that we're just beginning to explore is, um, you can print from a wireless device. And five years ago, that wouldn't have been something that we probably would have even cared about, because we didn't really have that many wireless devices, especially county-owned wireless devices. But, you know, we, we have laptops that don't even have network cables on them anymore. They're, they're running strictly off a wireless, um, system, even just a, a computer laptop. So, those kind of capabilities, I'll be curious to see what our requirements are in five years for the devices we have in, in the building.
Smartphones and iPads and, and just tablets. I mean, being able to access printing from those or scanning too, I mean, that's really been a, a change. I mean, I see, and Rick has his right there. I mean, if he would like to print something, it's kind of hard to do that prior to. But now, nowadays, those are all connected to our printers, where he could shoot off an email, he could send a print job. It's, it's really nice and one touch of a button. So, we'll see.
I think it's very likely to say that, you know, you probably project out a similar cost. And I would venture to say that, you know, there's a chance that we could potentially save you money over that course of time. Uh, it'll just kind of depend on what all happens in the next five years. Needs change oftentimes. Um, so do functionality on equipment. So, and that cost is really something that, you know, if you were to say, hey, what does this look like in a year? I would say that, uh, I'd have a better projection for you, but five years is quite a ways down the road, so.
So, I couldn't get a yes out of you, huh?
No. Sorry.
And this is just me totally speculating, but I, if it's like most things with technology, the cost may come down. Or if it doesn't, it's because what you're able to buy with that same amount of money is usually quite a bit more. Because technology itself usually gets cheaper. So, sometimes we don't end up seeing, you know, the computers may cost the same as they cost four years ago, but the power, the functionality you get is, is much higher. So, I wouldn't be surprised if it's the same with these machines.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, with that, I can ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to go forward with the contract with Premier for our printing program.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think we got most of the questions out there already. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we got Kristy Van Hellen, our county senatorian.
It's actually Kristy.
I'm reading.
It's okay. Okay, I made some copies for everybody. I don't know if I made enough, but, um, what I've been working on is trying to get an ordinance in place to get, to only allow licensed contractors to install septic systems in Hardin County. The map that's attached there shows you how many counties are already on board with this. The IOWWA is really pushing for it. I have a couple contractors with me that can also kind of vouch for why this needs to be done. Probably the biggest thing, it's not a money thing for them. It's more of when private people put in their own septics that don't necessarily know what they're doing. They haven't been to classes, you know, these guys, and myself included, have to pay to go to classes. We have to get twelve CEUs in order to keep doing what we do. And, you know, it takes a lot of time, especially out of their schedule, to do this. And it's not really fair on their part to allow everybody else to put septics in when they haven't had the training. They don't know exactly what it all entails. They know and they can prevent sewage running into your yard or into your neighbor's yard or whatever.
That's probably the biggest part of it. It's quite a bit of an environmental issue. You don't want to locate these things too close to a well, uh, waterways, tile, things like that. There's quite a little bit that goes with it and putting them in the right place and doing a good job with it.
No, go ahead. Finish.
Oh, just, just that. And technology's changing too. I mean, the old days of just having a backhoe and sticking septic tank in the ground are, are, it's totally different now. Now, they've got mini wastewater treatment plants that you stick in your backyard. If you don't have enough space, like these small towns of, you know, Owassa and, and all them towns like that, they don't have enough room in their yard to stick a full-blown septic in leach field. So, they've got, you know, advanced technology going in their yard, where essentially it's going through a mini treatment plant and dumping right back into a field tile, which is perfectly legal by the state of Iowa. But if you don't have education by installers that are putting these things in right, you're getting untreated wastewater going right into tile lines, right back into the creeks and rivers, right where we're trying to keep it out of. So, I mean, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge necessity to try to get, you know, contractors educated. I mean, we're not just trying to rule out ourselves as we're the only ones that can do it. Anybody can, you know, if, if you adopt the law, anybody can take the education, do the, the class, and become certified to put it in. They just have to spend a little bit of time to do it, so.
It's a bit of a safety issue too on some of these systems. I know some of the systems I've had to put in, the tanks are incredibly deep. And if you're over five feet deep, you're, you're into OSHA regulations. And I've had holes that are thirteen feet deep. And by the time you move that much dirt and put somebody in the bottom of it, you don't want a homeowner doing that. And I speak from experience. I buried one of my employees, and that was, that was not a good day. Because of, you know, just accidents happen. So, it's, it's not, uh, not something you want to do.
Can you tell me, um, maybe give me, I mean, an example of what, I take it there's times that you've had to go out and fix things that people have done themselves? I mean...
I had a real estate, uh, here in town called me and said, hey, there's, this house is having an issue. Can you go out and take a look? And, um, so I went out, inspected, figured out what was going on. And let's say that your outlet from the house, we're gonna call the outlet zero. And for where the tank was located, the tank should have been sixteen inches lower at that point. So, we have zero to minus sixteen. The previous homeowner that sold the house installed the tank at plus five. So, twenty-one inches of whoops, and they didn't quite understand why.
I remember that whoops.
So, so, you know, that's, I'm not against, like, just like this, I'm not against the average Joe doing it. But you want to do it right, because that was quite a bit of expense to, for me to go back in and do it right.
And the education, the education will teach you things that normal people wouldn't understand. You know, in Iowa, we have a lot of clay soils. So, I mean, we have a varying groundwater, seasonal wet groundwater table that will vary in the spring. The difference in Au- in, you know, August, you can drill down six foot and ever in an ounce of water. March, you drill down three foot, you might hit water in certain spots. An educated contractor will know the difference if they're putting a septic system in in August and they don't see water, but they'll be able to tell the signs of that soil by being educated, that, hey, this isn't a good idea, because there, there is a set of laws. There's a code put in place by the state of what we have to follow to install these things. But if, if you follow by the code, it doesn't, the code doesn't exactly tell you to look out for this or this. They just have a certain way of putting it in. I mean, they leave it up to the contractor to make sure that they put it in the, you know, the way that needs to be put in. I mean, if you kind of follow what I'm saying, it's, it's experience. I mean, it's experience and education that's gonna put it in the right way, um, you know, that'll, that's gonna protect everything, so.
Okay.
And then, maybe, you know, for private, trying to go back and fix private ones, sometimes it's kind of amazing what you'll find, what people were trying to do to get, to put a septic in.
A lot of, that's where we see a lot of the issues, is the cut corners, um, that, because I'm selling this house, and if I can do it myself, I can probably save a couple thousand bucks. I'll go rent that excavator and I'll do it, and I'll save a couple thousand dollars. But there again, maybe we just, it's out of the tank and right to a county tile. And, and those are the corners that we see cut, or, or it goes out to the ditch, um, goes out in the grove.
Doesn't it still have to pass some kind of inspection even?
Yes, it does at this point in time, yeah.
The problem is a lot of it, especially with private people.
Homeowners won't even call.
Yeah, homeowners won't even call to pull a permit. And unless, you know, these guys or I, while I'm out, stumble across something going on, we're not gonna know it. So, I rely on all my contractors and me being out, you know, it's like, I see, you know, they'll call me and say, well, I seen something over here. Did it have, has a permit been pulled?
Would you have the same problem even with this ordinance? If they're not contacting you now, would they contact you with an ordinance?
Well, if they find out, they can get fined for it. I know if, because we, it's easy to, I mean, it's complicated, but yet it's easy enough if there's, there, I have enough eyes out. If they see some, I check on it. If I gotta go out there and ask them about it, they're like, oh, okay, well, you know, no, I didn't know I had to pull a permit. Well, if there's some illegal activity going on, we can just tell them, okay, either you pay this and let's fix it, or we can fine you for installing without a permit. And that goes for contractors too. I mean, if they're not pulling permits and I find out about it, they can be fined as well. But the private people that just think, well, let's just do it on a Sunday afternoon, chances are, you know, I might not find out about it. And then, those are the ones that are draining out to the ditch, or draining out to the grove. And, you know, God forbid, my kids or somebody's kids or their dog or whatever is tromping through that ditch.
And the way that those do get found is during a real estate time of transfer inspection.
Right.
That's when, I'm also licensed by the DNR to go and do this inspection. And so, if I show up, yeah, you know, I have to find the basic parts of a septic system. And if it's relatively new, I can see it got put in two weeks ago, and I find that it doesn't, it's pretty easy to know, find out who did it, because it won't pass at that point in time, and that real estate won't transfer to the next owner. So, that's part of that, that program through the DNR. That's how a lot of those get found.
So, what is, what is the difference now that you see between working in, let's say, bumper of, or counties that, that have the ordinance and, and Hardin County? It's, it's not a big burden there, is it? You just have to show your certificate, where your certificate is on file.
She has it on file.
Okay. But the, but the actual...
That's what the other counties around us do.
Okay, but, but the ordinances that you've been dealing with in other counties, they don't, they don't set forth exactly how, how you have to install it. Is that a state?
That's statewide.
So, so...
That's a state law.
That's all chapter sixty-nine of the Iowa code.
I think the biggest thing is, is, is the perception of it in most people's eyes. You, you ask one guy out in the country, can you install your own septic? And he might say, heck, no, it's illegal to. And you ask the neighbor, can you install it? And he's, heck, yeah, I own my own backhoe. So, I mean, it kind of eliminates, it, it solves the question, can I put this in myself? Can I do this myself? Can I borrow Bob's backhoe down the road and do this myself? I mean, it eliminates that, and it leaves it up to the professionals to do it.
What if the line is just clogged or something? Can you still call Roto-Rudder or somebody like that, or?
Yeah, yeah. And then, there's certain wording in the code too. I mean, if you have a problem, the tank and before, you can fix it, tanker after, it has to be wrapped code.
Do you, uh, see septic tanks that have been put in by farmers or by people who are, who have the equipment themselves that are working fine also?
It's, it's, that's a gray line. I mean, yeah.
I mean, I'm getting the perception that everyone they put in, it is wrong.
I wouldn't say everyone. It's maybe a question of define working, working well or not. Does it have enough leach field? Uh, you know, is, is it on, on soil that will do a good secondary treatment of the effluent that comes out of the tank? You can probably, excuse me, you can probably get that to work on a, on a clay soil. But it's gonna take a huge amount of leach field to make it work. Where if it would have been located in a better soil that, maybe a professional that, you know, does this every day, could have, it could make a better functioning system.
Right.
So, do they work? Some of them do, I'm sure. They maybe could work a little bit better.
Education's not there, being that, you know, we're in maintenance too. Is, you ask that same farmer after he sticks that brand-new septic in, how long before you have to pump this out? And he'll look at it and say, that pump is...
I'm not pumping that out.
The septic tank's working right. It should never be pumped. And you ask anybody from the old days, and that's what they'll say. They're actually mad when something has to be pumped out, because they're under the impression it never does. And that's totally false. And to take and do maintenance on it and, and to do it right, it needs to be pumped out regularly. So, I mean, the education is just not there. The people that even do it install themselves, they might do it right, but they still won't even maintain it right in the future, you know?
And then, again, along with that, in the maintenance side of it, any septic system that's put in now has to have an outlet filter. The average guy's not gonna put one in, because he's never gonna touch it again. But an outlet filter is something you literally need to pull every year and clean out, because you don't want any of the solids to leave your tank and get out through the distribution box and into the secondary treatment field, because you're, you're basically just ruining that.
You'll plug it.
So, you know, the, and, and you, there, yeah, you might need, or by code, you need above-ground access. And the average guy might not put that on there. You know, we're, we as contractors are required to put that on. So, and the reason for that is winter time. If you, you know, instead of jackhammering down to something lit right there at ground level, it makes it easier, do a better job.
Any other questions?
I just had, I texted you or emailed you earlier this morning, as far as the process for this. I don't know, maybe you know too. I would think the Board of Health has to be involved with this, and, and don't they usually make recommendations to the board on changes for ordinances and stuff? Or is it the other way around? It wouldn't be the other way around.
Well, I would, I would think that they could just, um, you know, discuss it and just either pass a resolution or just direct the supervisors or, or at least recommend to the supervisors that this would be appropriate. I'd like to know what the other counties have done, whether they've had, whether they have their Board of Health play a role in it also.
It's good. I mean, it's become proactive. I mean, just a few short years ago, there's only eleven counties. There are now twenty, twenty-nine, I believe. Twenty-nine. Dan Olson, head of the DNR, just in our, um, classes last week, said that he's putting it into the next legislative session, that he would like that to be amended to the new chapter sixty-nine rules, that it's gonna be a requirement for all counties. So, I mean, it's, it's gonna happen sooner than later. It'd just be nice to be proactive and have it happen sooner than later.
Once, once you present your certificate to the county, do you pay a, do you pay an annual fee to be certified for that county, or?
Um, some counties do, yeah.
I think Grundy does.
Grundy does.
Grundy just had, got theirs passed here real...
But they required a license for years.
Yeah, and they just got the ordinance put in place, and that's why I attached a copy of their ordinance that she just got pushed through.
Do you guys have re-licensed here?
It's taken, I mean, it's twelve...
Continue with that.
Yeah, continue with that hours.
Yeah, I'd like, is there, do you have contacts with all these counties or not?
I can have contacts. I know, I talk a lot to her over in Grundy County. I kind of feel out what she's doing and everything, but yeah, I have all their...
I'd be curious as to how many of them really charge for them to have their license on file.
It's pretty minimal. I think it's twenty-five dollars for...
That's, I think, twenty-five dollars or something they charge to keep that.
I mean, I would think we'd want to be doing what a majority of the other counties are doing.
We have a Board of Health advisor. We could contact her and, and then contact the other counties and see the process that they went through, and, and it sounds like a good program.
Now, now, as a senatorian, if you had your licensed contractors, that would mean you wouldn't have to inspect here as much on the work that they do, or?
Well, I still have to inspect. It's required that I go out to every site and look at everything before they cover it up. I still have to go out regardless.
Okay.
And ninety-nine percent of the time, there's no problem, because they know what they're doing.
There's other tests like PERC tests and everything else.
PERC tests. You know, I don't do, I don't make them do soil testing, because I haven't been trained in that yet. So, I have no idea. If they would bring that to me, I wouldn't have any idea. I've only been to a couple soil classes, and I don't feel comfortable doing that. There's a few counties that only do soils. They don't do PERC tests. They've eliminated PERC tests.
Some counties actually require... Some counties actually require a soils engineer, uh, to basically build the plan. And then I would have to install the system.
According to their plan.
You know, I'd hate to see it come to that because it could really slow things down, but if that's what it has to be, it's what it would have to be.
You, you say they're bringing something to the state right now about this. Would that be part of it?
I don't know if they're gonna require soils engineers for all ninety-nine counties. Uh, I think they would like to market everybody in the, the same area to have contractors. They're taking the education and putting it to use.
It's baby steps. I mean, they want everybody in the state to have some kind of a certification showing that they've been trained to do this. I mean, you don't want a doctor operating that hasn't been educated how to operate, so I mean, they just, they want everybody, and that's their first step, you know, and then maybe down the road, they'll do something else. But that's the majority of it right there. I mean, anybody in the building, do anything they want right now, pay a small permit fee and...
And it's still kind of, you know, amongst everything else, in my eyes, it still pertains, goes back to the health of everybody. You don't want your sewage running out in the ditch, or, you know, like you said, in the grove, or if something got installed wrong, here it comes across your lawn, and your dog goes through it, or your little kids go through it, and then your kids are getting sick and you don't know why. You know, it, it could be my kids. It could be somebody else's kids.
Well, we actually, some of our old systems are set up that way still. But as new systems get put in, they should probably be put in properly.
Well, that's, that's the time of transfer inspection that's required by the state. That's, you can't really go to the entire state. Okay, you have to update your system now. And so through the real estate transfers, everything's gonna get sold at some point in time.
Sooner or later.
So we're finding those, uh, you know, a little step here and a step there.
But to put those new systems in improperly would not be where we want to be.
You don't wanna, you could take one that's functioning poorly, put in another poorly functioning system.
Right. And I agree with the baby steps. I think we need to start somewhere, so I, I, but the, the fee that might be charged or whatever, I think that needs to be in place, whether, you know, whether we do it or we leave it out, you know, however. Um, but I, I do agree. I think something needs to be done. This sounds like a good plan.
How long have leach fields been enforced by the DNR?
Uh, well, the time of transfer inspection process started, what, seven, eight years ago?
But how long did they require it to be leach fields instead of septic tanks?
Well, you still have to have a tank.
The leach field is part of your septic tank.
The leach field is the secondary.
Instead of dropping to the creek.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
Well, when did they start doing that?
The, the septic tanks actually evolved back in the fifties, and that's when they actually started putting septic tanks in for the first time in known history. I started actually worrying about where the wastewater does go. And I started cleaning it up. And I bet it wasn't until some of the earliest leach fields, I suppose, were put in in the seventies. Otherwise, most of them before that were right to the ditch or creek or field tile. Um, so s- late seventies, mid-seventies was probably some of the first leach fields you see. And most of them are failing now because they were only a twenty-five-year system. Um, so, I mean, if they've made it this long, they're, they're shot.
They've lived their course.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, now's the time where you're, you're starting to see a lot of it between the time of transfer inspections and the previous leach fields. If they do have one failing, I mean, now's when everything's starting to get turned over. And the science behind it's all different now than it was back then. I mean, back then, they just stuck a four-inch pipe in the ground, some holes drilled in it.
Little pea gravel on bottom of the ditch, and it's all good.
There's some science behind it, so that's why it's kind of more important to be educated in it.
So the counties that you, that you've been working in that have the ordinance, i- is it just applicable to your work in, in, in the rural areas? Because I know that, well, for example, the house I live in, we have a rural septic system. We live in town. So I didn't know if the ordinance was covering those.
The, the ordinance covers anything with a septic system? I mean, if you live in...
In the county, whether it's in the city or...
Whether you're in town or not. If you're in town and your septic system happens to fail when you're within two hundred feet of a city, so then you're required to hook up to the city. But if you're over two hundred foot, then you kind of have the option.
Do you have the authority inside city limits? Do you have to go by the city ordinance system?
I have to go by the city.
So if we made an ordinance, it wouldn't necessarily mean that he's in city limits. It would affect him without the city's authority?
Since it's a se- actual private septic system, they will call me out and have me look at it. But I don't think I actually have official authority over it, since it is within city limits. Because we had him out here by the rock and roll. Over there, there was a guy that kind of was going back and forth on whether or not he wanted to attach to a city, and he didn't think he needed to, and he wanted his own, and it was just kind of a battle. And I was out there quite a bit trying to help him figure out what would be the best route for that.
Okay. Well, at this time, I don't know that we have an ordinance in front of us, and we'd like a recommendation from the Board of Health. Is that correct?
I think so.
Easy to get, so.
So, I'd like to thank everybody for coming in here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
For me.
Rick, is that something that you can kind of draw up?
Yeah, I mean, the one from Grundy, I try not to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
Right.
And then maybe even a resolution?
I may get a couple more too. There's several counties that I can...
Board of Health?
Sure.
Okay, great. All right.
Well, thank you.
So, uh, the Grundy process is pretty functionable to you guys.
Yeah, it works well.
All right, good.
That way it makes it easier too, if everything's kind of the same in surrounding counties for you to go from one county to the next to do business. Right.
I agree.
That's basically, you know, if you adopt this, for us as contractors, it's basically take it off the wall, make a copy of it, and it's done.
Okay.
It's what, what we do for any other county that requires it.
And it's a pretty strict process. I mean, the National Environmental Health Association came up with the test, and they, that's essentially the test that all these contractors would have to take to be able to install in these certified counties. So, I mean, it's, it's very strict. I mean, it's, it's not just a walk-in A, B, C, D thing. I mean, you have to have some education behind it to be able to pass it, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the information. Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
Well, next, I have Tam here.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I'm representing the, and I guess I'm the pro- really the program director. Here, go right. Whoops.
Slide that over to the board.
So you all have my card. Um, the current board of the Harden County Community Endowment Foundation felt we should dig up our bylaws and try to, um, make sure that we are following them correctly. We've kind of made some changes since, uh, the board started, actually, it's eleven years ago right now. And so at that time, it was to have a representative from each of the, of the communities. And since it's kind of hard to get some representation from each community, we kind of went to quadrants. So we wanted to revise the bylaws to say that. And as we were reading the bylaws, it says, "An additional board member shall be chosen from the Harden County Board of Supervisors or their designee to represent the rural area of Harden County." So that's why I'm here, to invite one of you to become part of it. Or someone that you would like to designate. And that would be, and we would have to have, um, our board approval for that too. So we meet once a month, um, usually not in December, and then in the summer, one month. So those are things we have to kind of align to in our, in our, um, bylaws. And then we have, we're right in the middle of our grant application process. The grants are due the end, or February fifth, and then we'll be reviewing those, and the board members make those decisions, who gets the money. And we have ninety thousand dollars to distribute to Harden County this year.
Do you have a recommendation of a board member?
Of one of you guys?
Yes.
Any, me, me, my... Right.
Put her in the middle there.
No, that, that's entirely up to you. You're, you know, if you'd all like to join us, you'd... We meet the third Thursday of, of every month. And we are down to ten board members right now. And we're trying to keep with the bylaws, we're from nine to fifteen that we...
Oh, nine to fifteen, okay.
Yes.
I knew there was a range.
And we like to have a representation through our Harden County. So that's what we're really, our goal is, to make sure of that.
Okay.
So, do you guys want to draw straws, or?
Actually, I'm thinking it's the third Thursday that I have a, a meeting that night.
Well, 'cause I, I looked at you, you know, we're kind of a little late by getting in here, because I see that you were divvied out into organizations across the county.
Um, at ten-thirty, we have boards and commissions and reports. We could talk about it then and discuss that there. We could talk about it here. It doesn't matter to me.
Uh, so when do you meet then?
The third Thursday of every month at seven o'clock, and we, and that varies, and we go throughout the county. We don't meet at one place every time. We were at Steamboat Rock last Thursday, and then we'll do some meetings now at the Extension Office in Iowa Falls for a grant process.
Okay.
What time was it again?
Thursday, uh, the third Thursday at seven o'clock.
Okay.
I have the third, for Thursday, no. Third Thursday, yes, I'm available, so I could take that board.
Okay.
But it's up to you guys.
I'll name and date Ron.
Well, at this, at this time, why don't we just put it on for next week's agenda to...
Yeah, we could.
Make the appointment?
Yeah, to make the appointment.
Okay. All right.
Anything else for us?
Thanks, Tam.
No, I, I apologize. We didn't get here to do a proclamation for philanthropy month in November, but, um, and we work with Ellsworth College and the hospital with that too, so we were all kind of swamped in November, so. But this way, we can keep you lifted up in what's going on in the county as far as our distributions and what we do. So we appreciate everything that you do for us.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Next, we have a change of status on the sheriff's office. I have two.
Um, I will make a motion to, um, approve the discharge of Sarah Meester as Communications Officer in the sheriff's office. Last date of work will be December first, two thousand and fifteen. Evidently, it's something that's already happened, so just to prove it.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries.
And then we have the hiring. I'll pr- make a motion to approve the hiring of Erin Frank as Communications Officer, um, and it's permanent, part-time, at twelve sixty-one an hour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Next, we have is a set time and date for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, seventeen budget hearing.
I will make a motion to set the budget hearing for March ninth. That's on a Wednesday at four forty-five. I think the conference room here is available. We can make sure that we have enough seating provided, so.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Did you say you were gonna do it here in the conference room, not the courthouse?
Right, that's not available.
Courtroom's unavailable.
Good, that'll be easier to set up, so thanks.
Now, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries. Now, we have the consideration of a tax abatement fiscal year sixteen on five-ten Stephen Street, Iowa Falls. This is one we tabled previously. I know Rick has worked with, uh, Lynn Wees for a type of an agreement on this. You wanna go ahead and explain a little bit, or?
Uh, sure. Well, I think just kind of a brief history in this is probably appropriate. This is property that the Community Theater in Iowa Falls purchased from a, a church. The, uh, that entity is a nonprofit entity, and therefore, they would not have to pay taxes, but there's a procedure to follow. And traditionally, when there's a transfer, uh, then there'll be an opportunity to submit the paperwork to, uh, be considered tax exempt, if you are in fact tax exempt. In this particular case, the property transferred, and, and there really wasn't any, it just didn't get updated uh, for, you know, probably ten years or so, I would, I would guess. And there's really no loss there because of the fact that the entity that bought it from the church was nonprofit too, but, but the paperwork just didn't, didn't get done. So, uh, through, through a variety of, of events, uh, it was brought to the, uh, brought to the attention of the, uh, of the assessor, uh, I believe. And then the, uh, at, at that time, um, it, it just gets a little unclear exactly what happened, what didn't happen. But, but basically, um, the paperwork did not get turned in, uh, on a timely basis so that, uh, the proper exemption could be done. However, uh, there was an action taken, which was routine. Uh, it just wasn't, it just didn't comply with law. It was routine, I think, for the assessor to be able to uh, just, uh, say the property is, is exempt. In most cases, it probably was. Um, and then that procedure was followed by both the auditor and the treasurer's office. And, uh, the taxes were, were basically, basically abated once the change was made, and that wasn't really properly done. So they then got a, a tax bill, and, um, the supervisors basically asked me to look at it, and I think originally, there might have been an action that was gonna be taken to, uh, require them to pay the entire amount. Well, after I went through the whole history of it, I, I think there are perhaps, uh, some missteps and, and mistakes made, and certainly nothing, nothing intentional or anything like that. But, uh, you know, based on, on, on my review of the situation, I recommended, uh, to the board that, uh, fair compromise would be for the, uh, taxes, uh, to be split, basically, and that the, um, theater pay the half that was due in September, that, uh, authority be granted from the supervisors to the treasurer to not impose the penalty or, or, or interest. And then we would abate the, uh, portion due in March. The paperwork gets completed properly, and this just won't happen again. So it was just kind of a fluke that, that resulted, uh, you know, resulted in, in the taxes, uh, the tax statement being, being sent. So it's kind of a long-winded explanation, but I think you have to understand, you know, that this isn't any special treatment. In my opinion, it is properly done. It's not a precedent setting. This would not, is not gonna happen very often. You know, where a church sells property to a nonprofit, but the paperwork doesn't get filled out, and, and they don't pay any taxes, which they wouldn't have paid in the first place. So I, I think it's a, a fair proposal. Uh, I discussed the matter with Lynn Wees, the attorney for the theater. I sent him a letter, included a variety of documents with that. And, uh, he responded by sending a check with the tax, uh, for the September payment, which I delivered to Lance, which I think not delivered to Nancy, even per Ask to Michelle. But, uh, that, I, I think that, you know, summarizes the situation.
Through the material that you gave us to read, it sounds like both parties are accepting of where we're at right now.
Yeah, and, and, and there's no, you know, there's no blaming anyone. It's just one of those things that happen. And in this, I just wanna thank Jessica. She provided me a lot of information that helped me uh, kind of understand the situation better, and Michelle's been very helpful also.
Yep. So, uh, make sure my wording is correct on this, but, uh, prove it.
Excuse me, you, you may wanna get some info, input from Michelle to see what she needs, uh, you know, to properly, uh, you know, cash that check or, or exempt the, or, or waive the interest and penalty.
Yeah, I just need something stated that we're accepting it without the interest.
Penalty, without penalty. Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I was gonna throw that in, but still, make sure that my wording is correct. So, uh, to go ahead, uh, improve the tax abatement for the fiscal year of two thousand and sixteen uh, for five-ten Stephen Street, Iowa Falls, accepting the first payment without penalty. Good?
Great.
All right.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think you gave a great description of that.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, ladies.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries. Now, we are onto the emergency management quarterly report.
And did you get a copy and you changed the folder out? As a board? Um, so just touching base on a couple of things. We're very heavy on the planning pieces last quarter, and we discussed that in our meeting over the budget about the mitigation plan. Um, that piece coming together, and we also discussed the school planning, which is moving forward. Um, in fact, that re- received... In fact, I've received word that there's another workshop coming up and I'll be grateful. We'll attend to move forward on those, development of those school emergency plans. Waiting a little bit, we're kind of, we're waiting on the judicial system to come back with a summary of the walkthrough that happened in October. I think you, some of you members were able to, I was not, I had a different meeting. But still haven't received a summary on that to move forward on any of the security LEPs, so hopefully they will get something to us this quarter. And had a small release, I did talk about that a little bit in here. There was no negative impact, no consequences involved in that and I hesitated to put the name of the company in here because of that. If you guys will get to talk to me about that. No drills, but we are working on a full-scale drill that we will be working with in 2017. Also going to participate with Public Health. They have to do a full-scale drill for a grant that they have received and so I'm going to tag with them and we'll be working on that this year. Had no actual events, which is a good thing, even though we remain prepared for those. So were there any questions from the board on the activities?
I don't have any, do you?
No. Thank you. Well written.
I guess most hard questions we asked about two weeks ago in the budget.
Okay, yeah, we do. And my commission will meet this month or in a couple of weeks for our public hearings on that budget, which Renee is the member on the commission for that.
Well, thank you.
I will go ahead and make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the emergency management quarterly report.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Thank you. Next, we have is an off-site storage of data agreement with Solutions.
This is, it just, they sent it in such a way that I realized I needed you guys' signature. This is what we're going to have. We learned about an off-site solutions storage that allows us to take all the data on NIAS for 100 and have it remotely stored. The price is really reasonable. Solutions takes care of it. We wish we'd known about this earlier, but we have, and so we just need you guys to sign that. It's just like an addendum onto our existing contract form. We think it's a great value and we're happy to do it. It solves one of the concerns we have with their data is that we didn't really have a good off-site storage solution should we have an issue or a disaster here at the courthouse to get us back up and running. So the cost of this is really just for the stores. It's in fine print and I don't have it in front of me. I want to say it's like 1,200.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's just the annual cost of having all the data stored securely off-site and getting the data to the off-site. Should we have an incident where we have to restore all that, there'll be some additional costs for that and that's not included in there, but we wouldn't know what those costs were until we know what kind of incident we're dealing with anyway. So it's reasonable that those would not be included, so. Anyway, so I just ask that you, Lance, that you go ahead and sign that. And then this is not something that we budgeted for an IT, but it's a reasonable cost that IT department can cover and we'll just kind of group it in with the rest of the fees and stuff that we pay to Solutions.
Okay. I need a motion for me.
I'll make the motion to approve the off-site storage of data virtualized disaster recovery.
It is referred to as EVault, is what I learned.
EVault.
EVault.
Program with Solutions and approve the board to sign, or the chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Next, I have is change of status in the treasurer's office.
Make a motion to approve change of status, treasurer's office for Tiffany Eisentrager, driver's license deputy, salary rate moved up to 38, 384. She's full-time, this is a pay increase. Increased duties and responsibilities.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Utility permits, I had none and for secondary roads, Darrell, can I be here today? But we will meet with him later on a work session. And from there, I can go to other business. Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries for adjourn.